Go ahead and call our meeting to order and welcome everybody here. Today's November third. Hope you all had a great, amazing Halloween weekend and got plenty of candy and junk food to get you through the rest of the year. I've asked Vice Chairman David to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for being here today. We have Supervisor Howard. He's on the microphone down there. You just can't see him, but he's really here. Welcome Supervisor Howard.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have anybody online? Welcome to those who are online this morning. Could we get a motion to approve our minutes of our meeting and work session held on October 20th?
Chairman Mack, I'll move that we approve the meetings of our regular or our Board of Supervisors meeting and work sessions on October 20th of 2025.
And I will second that.
All in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes. Could we get a motion to approve our demands and handwritten warrants?
I'll go ahead and make that motion again, Mr. Chairman, and would note that there was a a disbursement of opioid settlement funds to the Samaritan House for outreach, which I highly approve of and appreciate the the direction of the funds to the to the Samaritan House. So that's my motion, a move to approve.
Also second that.
All in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes and I'll turn our time over to our Sheriff PJ Allred.
Good morning, gentlemen. How are we today?
Good, thank you.
Good, good. So yeah, I have one item today and we're asking for the approval to apply for a bulletproof vest partnership program to purchase ballistic and stab vests for our deputies and detention officers. It's something that we do pretty regularly, this program. We would like to think that these vests, even though they're not being shot and stabbed every day, they do have a life expectancy also. And so we have to rotate those out and and get additional and new ones. And we have this opportunity for a partnership in this program to be able to purchase some more of these ballistic stab vests and ballistic vests for detention and and for our deputies.
Great. Any questions or concerns from the board?
Just just comment, Mr. Chairman, and that is the the thought of being in harm's way all the time and and having to wear something like that is is a gives me a pause and I appreciate the men and women who who put themselves in that situation and that kind of uncertainty. But it's great to have a partner that pays half of the of the cost because these are well made. They're they're expensive, but worth every every penny. And so grateful to have a partner and grateful that we get those grants and and then the taxpayer funds that that are for matching the 50% match, money well spent. I'll move to approve.
And I'll I'll second that.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you, Sheriff. We'll now hear from Herman Anders with our probation department.
I don't mean to go off script, but PJ, that that contract that he gets, we also piggyback on that. So it's it's a really great program. I am here in front of you today for an approval of the purchase of an unbudgeted capital for a desk with a hut for remodeling the control room, and it'll come out of our probation service fees and not to exceed $4,000.
Questions, concerns?
I just would note, Mr. Chairman, that it had it's it's got provisions for locking for to to keep funds safe. And so that adds a little bit of the complexity and cost. It's more than I would would pay for my home, but this is industrial grade. So and it's needed. And and I appreciate the the most of the work that's been done for that control room is in-house. So we've contained costs. This is a reasonable expenditure of funds. I'll I'll move to approve and 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 appreciate the the efforts.
And go ahead and second that one.
All in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Herman. Appreciate you and your guys and all that you do for us and gals. Turn the time over to Brian Douglas with our help department.
Good morning, gentlemen. We're requesting approval of the access inmate hospitalization IGA. This is an annual agreement that we do have with access. And the only change from last year to this year is there is an increase in the annual administrative cost and that increased by $514.
That's per per incident or for the whole year?
For the entire year.
Okay.
Yes.
Great. Any questions, concerns?
I'll would would just note that it's the hospitalization costs can be can can really impact the budget and the fact that we have control, we have an upper limit that and a safety net. I think it's $10,000. You can run up a $10,000 bill in a in a trauma setting in a hurry. So it's great to have a a safety net and to participate in this. and to participate in this and I, it's peace of mind.
Supervisor Howard, did you have anything?
No. I can't hear real good, Clay. It's kind of echoey. I can't hear you very well, what's going on, but I'm getting the gist of it, but no, I don't have any questions.
Okay. Can we get a motion?
Yes, I'll go ahead and move. And thank you for taking time out of your day and your time away, Supervisor Howard, and I wish you well and hurry home. We need you. But I'll go ahead and make a motion that we do approve the IGA amendment number nine.
And I'll second it.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
I didn't hear.
I didn't.
Aye.
Okay.
Motion passes. Thank you. All right, next we have Cindy Blake with our HR department. Thank you.
Yeah, good morning. I have an easy request. It's the adoption of the two thousand twenty-six holiday schedule. I would be happy to answer any questions you may have about it.
Questions, concerns?
Nope, but I'll move to approve.
Okay.
And I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes. Thank you, Cindy. Next we will hear from Julie Rodriguez with the Board of Supervisors Office.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I come here today to request ratification of an additional thirty-five thousand dollar transfer from the jail district debt service fund to the jail district operations fund. This happened during the preparation of the financial statements for the audit. There are a lot of entries, non-cash entries that are made during the audit of the financial statements, and I underestimated a little bit. I had done nine hundred thousand at the end of the fiscal year, and I needed an additional thirty-five thousand so that the jail district operations would not be in a negative balance, which is not okay.
Yeah. Okay. Questions?
I'm surprised not at the amount of thirty-five thousand, but that Julie actually underestimated because she's usually right on or perfect. So I'm, it's important to balance the books. It's a necessity and I'm pleased to, and we have adequate funds and in excess. So this is not a problem at all. I go ahead, it's just a paperwork accounting move. I'd go ahead and move that we do approve it.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes. Thank you, Julie.
Thank you.
Next we will hear from Mindy Young with the Superior Court. Thank you for being here today, Mindy.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This morning I am requesting approval of a limited services agreement with Denise Ripple doing business as Ripple Reporting LLC for fiscal year twenty-six and fiscal year twenty-seven. Denise is a court reporter. For some reason, we have had an influx of jury trials over the last twelve months. We are currently at, our budget is ten thousand dollars for court reporting. We are currently at ninety-four percent of our budget already due to jury trials. And then once they go to trial, they almost always appeal, and then you have more costs for that. So Denise has been doing court reporting for us for the last probably two to three years. She used to work for Hila County. She no longer works for them, so she's always made herself available for us. She's agreed to lock in her rates for this fiscal year, the rest of this fiscal year plus next fiscal year to help us lock in those rates. Other court reporters are not typically available. We send emails out to the whole group, usually, oh, I'm available for one day, but not all the days. Denise is available. She's agreed to make herself available on an as-needed basis. She also has a lower mileage rate because she's in Globe, so she's a little bit closer. So we also have two more firm trial dates, November, December, and I believe we have another one in January or February. And I don't know the reason of the influx in trials, but they're usually serious nature of the case, significant prison exposure. So anyway, so for today, I'm requesting that you approve this limited services contract with Ripple Reporting.
Great, thank you. Any questions, concerns for the board?
Thanks, Chairman. I just, yeah, it's great that you've got that resource. You've developed it and retained it and having it close by in Globe, I'm thinking that in the future between video and AI, that this may be one of those, something in ten years that is done with, through AI. And so I'll, but that's just a conjecture. But obviously, we need it. She's reasonable and we don't have another option, and so I'm pleased that you have that resource. And I would move that we approve the limited services agreement with Denise Ripple.
I'll go ahead and second that one.
All in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mindy. All right. And I'll take this opportunity for members of the board and the county manager to present a brief summary of current events, and we will start with Manager Welker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Most of last week, we spent our time down in Yuma for our annual legislative summit, spent two and a half days with the other supervisors throughout the state and managers and others with the County Supervisor Association. I just want to thank Chairman Mack and Vice Chairman Paul David for all their hard work down there, and I'll leave the gory details to your own reports, but thank you for the time. Just a couple updates on some of our projects, our main street building remodel, the demolition work over at the building has started, so we're happy to see that going. Our fairgrounds, master plan design, we've spent a lot of time down there looking at the water system, looking at our existing RO system and filters and pumping station. And I'm grateful for Bowman and our Parks Department for how much time they've spent trying to find the most efficient system possible, and we should have some pretty solid plans coming out of that here shortly. Another project we've worked on the last couple of weeks is our CDBG project. That's our Community Development Block Grant. We receive that every four years through CEGO, Southeastern Arizona Government Organization. This year it's two hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars. It has to be used for either low-income support or things associated with ADA. So we've, the project that we submitted as of the end of last week, want to thank Eric for spearheading this and taking care of this while we were over in Yuma, was about, almost a half mile of ADA sidewalks over at the fairgrounds. So we're excited for that. They're going to link a lot of those parking lots that we just finished building and put sidewalk throughout the park, connecting a lot of things that need connected. So there'll be some great connectivity throughout the park on that. They'll all be ADA accessible. Another little project are the old sign on Armory Road that we no longer use. We have that bid out. We awarded that project to Summit West Signs out of Tucson, so we're excited to get that project going. We've put a lot of work into the Clean and Lean Ordinance and another, thank you to County Attorney Scott Bennett for his support on that and bringing in some help from a contract attorney. We've reviewed that in-house. We've redlined it. Me and Steve are still going back and forth on some things, but we hope to have that ready to send back to County Attorney Bennett and Volkmar here soon. So that is moving along. Herman Anders mentioned the probation control room remodel. I just want to thank, as you mentioned, Vice Chairman David, we have been doing a lot of that almost entirely in-house, and want to thank Matt and Mike for all their work in there. We're also working with ACI, Arizona Correctional Industries, to build some pews over in the courthouse, in the courtroom. It's a project that our Superior Court Judge has been wanting to do for several years, and we're working on the plans and specs for those. And Mindy, I have those. I received them on Friday, so I'll send those over to you today to review. We're going to have plenty of time after this meeting for our work sessions, so I won't go into any of our highway engineering and parks things. So I'm excited to get in a work session and get caught up on a lot of those projects with the board. That's my report for now, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Manager Welker. Vice Chairman David?
Thank you, Chairman. The week of October twentieth through the twenty-sixth was able to attend the Southeastern Arizona Community Unique Services ribbon cutting and had some brief remarks. They've moved to the remodeled Sorensen Building there on, just around the corner from their previous facilities, but they are, they're a great contributor to our community and manage this, the Senior Citizen Center, and they expressed appreciation for the county's continued housing and maintenance as well as utilities for that facility for our senior citizens. So that was, it was nice to hear that, nice to attend that. On Tuesday, the twenty-first, there was a, a couple of meetings. One was a strategy meeting for short-term rentals, long-term, the problems that they're having. The legislature a couple of years ago decided that they were going to preempt the abilities of counties to tax and to manage short-term rentals, which, a good case in point, Sedona, the population of Sedona has dropped from fourteen thousand to nine thousand because over twenty-five percent of that housing where people used to live is now short-term rentals. And so there, that is a problem that was addressed during the summit, and they're looking for a little more control because it's kind of gotten to the point where people are displaced from housing, populations in tourist-prone areas is dropping, and there's some unintended consequences. So that was a meeting I attended. Also, later that afternoon, there was a, every year in January, there's a point in time count where they assess and see how many people in our county are homeless or are living in substandard conditions that would be considered homeless so that the funds from Arizona Department of Housing can be made available for both transitional and short-term help as well as funding the Respite Center. Later that week, went to, we had a final meeting before the Lions Club at EAC, a five K and ten K run, which, and ride, and we had about sixty people who attended and paid admittance, and that was a success, raised over six thousand dollars for crisis care for the college, for the, for college students. And then on the week of the twenty-seventh through the second, went to a rural transportation, I attended remotely, rural transportation meeting. We're still looking for not only individual projects, but also advocating for funding. It's a tight, really tight budget year coming up, so there's a lot of uncertainty there, but we're certainly going to try to get our share and then maybe a little bit more through our legislators. And then later that evening, there was a Safford City Council meeting and watched the vote and the proceedings there and the outcome on the utility rate proposal. And then traveled Tuesday with Dustin and Chairman traveled separately, but we went to the Legislative Policy Summit, and I'll just say briefly, it was proposals for improving everything from voting to agriculture to solar, all kinds of, eighteen different proposals. And we discussed about, about half of those made it through that will, that may become bills. And finally, returned home Thursday, and then that evening went to the, was really honored to be able to, to help present at the Graham and Greenlee County Small Businesswoman of the Year Award. And then Friday morning, finished off the week with a phone conference with the Social Services Director from St. Carlos, along with local committee to end homelessness and talking about some housing options and grants for the tribal members in the Bielsa and Paradot area. And that's my report. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sorry, that was a little longer, but lots of activity.
Yep. Thank you. Appreciate it. Supervisor Howard?
Well, yeah, I'm out here on my annual, I guess, getaway, sitting in the trees and freezing my rear end off, but I'm anxious to get back to work, and I thank you guys for picking up my slack at the CSA. Got a few reports on it and everything, so please, pleased on some of it, not so pleased on others, but I'm anxious to get back home. I hope I don't have to hitchhike because the air traffic controllers aren't going to be at work. So I don't know, maybe I'll, it'll be a while before I get home, but I miss you guys. I can't wait to get back. See you soon.
Well, thank you. Chairman, I had your proxy vote, John, that you gave me, and so I was voting for you, and whenever someone didn't like the way we voted, I just said, well, that's what Supervisor Howard told me to do.
Yeah, I'm sure you did. I'm sure you did. Thank you, Paul.
Okay, you're welcome.
I don't have a lot to add to that, but I do want to thank, I do want to thank our County Supervisor Association over in Phoenix. Craig and his team put together a great summit for us. It's very important. It's very informative. We learn a lot about what's going on in the state and have the opportunity to voice our opinions, and they just do a great job putting that together for us, and it's just a, it's very informative, but it's a good time as well. So want to thank them and appreciate all that they do. The other thing that I gained from our summit is a great appreciation for our elected officials and department heads. We have a opportunity to associate with the other supervisors, and you listen to some of the gripes and complaints, and it makes me feel super blessed that we have the people that we have because we don't have a whole lot of that. So hats off to our elected officials and department heads. You're great people and we're very thankful for you. We'll now close our regular meeting and go into a public hearing, and we will turn the time over to Steve McGoy with Planning and Zoning. Thank you for being here today, Steve.
Good morning.
Morning.
This morning is time for a public hearing for a zone change in Solomon. Our nine-hundred-and-forty-second zoning since we started doing this in nineteen sixty-nine. And this particular property was rezoned number ten, probably in nineteen seventy. So we're going to change that today, I bet. Sandra Harado has asked to rezone a parcel at the corner of Second Avenue and Center Street. She would like to hand that down to her boy and he be able to put a house on it. And the MX zoning that is there doesn't allow for that, and she wants to fix it. It probably, I don't know how it happened that it got done that way, but it did. So this went to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and they gave a unanimous favorable recommendation to change it to AR thirty, and we have heard from none of the neighbors, positive or negative, and we think it'd be a good idea. So if you have questions, I'll try to answer them. And if she wants to speak, we'll let her. and if she wants to speak, we'll let her.
Would you like to speak? Okay. I think Solomon is such a, such a cool little community, if you drive around and look at it, there's still a lot of the old, older homes there, there's some newer homes there, and I'm excited to see her split this up and build a new house there for her son, and just excited for her to get to have family right next door, so. Any questions, concerns from the board?
Just an additional comment, thank you, and that's well said, Chairman. I would just note that, that the zoning, which, which appreciate the director, the MX is unlimited, and to pull that back and allow for some development in Solomon. At one time, that was, I guess, a combination feedlot and farm, and all kinds of agricultural activity, but now it's settled into a more of a residential community, so it's, this is an appropriate rezone that I completely support, and wish Sandra, who was a classmate, wonderful teacher for decades at the high school, and one of the other things I would say without getting too far away from the agenda, is that she, I've always admired her service to her community of Solomon, and she was instrumental in getting the program to help kids with the weekend, kids who didn't have good resources, she would, they would, they would put a little backpack together and food for the weekend for kids at the Solomon Elementary School, and lots of great things at church community, so I would do this for any resident, because it's the right thing to do, but for Sandra, I'm pleased that I can help in some small way and represent my constituents and say, this is a good, this is a good move, and wish her well.
Yeah, along with that, Clay, Supervisor Mack, Chairman Mack, just want to say that it's just putting it back where it needs to be. The zoning it had wasn't useful for that area, it puts it in perspective on the other type of homes in that area, so I more than welcome this back to where it needs to be.
Awesome, can we get a motion?
No, we, public?
Oh, anybody here from the public to speak? Okay.
Okay.
Can we get a motion?
I'm pleased to move that we go ahead and approve the rezoning request for the Geraldo parcel.
And I'll be glad to check that.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve, appreciate you, and we'll now close our public hearing and go back into our regular meeting, and we will turn the time over to Manager Welker, we'll open some bids.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a project that was, of course, budgeted for this fiscal year, replacing the radios in the jail. Definitely not the same kind of project we did for our deputies, these radios are just for inside the jail, this is to replace the equipment and the original radios that we purchased when the jail first opened. Not digital radios, just analog radios, so the price will be quite a bit different. Looks like we received two bids on those, so. Okay, this first bid is from Heela Electronics. Total bid amount on this, $65,027.76.
And, Mr. Chairman, I would note that in our packet, it said that these are Kenwood grade or better systems.
Thank you, and this bid is from?
Aircom, it says on, it's in small print on the?
Okay, thank you. This one's from Aircom, and this is a total bid of $73,208.
How much was the first one?
The first one was sixty?
Sixty-five.
First one was from Heela Electronics of Yuma, $65,027.76. And again, Aircom was $73,208.
Okay, thank you, Manager Welker.
Was there an estimate, in-house estimate on that?
TJ, do you remember what the budget was on that? I don't remember off the top of my head.
So, it's well under the, your figures? Okay.
Now that we said it.
Okay, well, thanks. Mr. Chairman, I would move that we would submit the, these two bid packages for review, for conformity, and then award them to the lowest conforming bidder, and have that done by our in-house, once that review has been completed.
And I'll go ahead and check that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Okay. Next, we will turn the time over to Manager Welker for our Halloween Costume Challenge presentation. So, it's exciting.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, every once in a while, we have fun around here, and this time, they waited for me and the board to leave to have fun, so we didn't get to see any of it or partake of any of it, but I heard all good things. So, I'm gonna show the, who decided to compete in this competition this year, the departments, and then I will leave it to Ms. Hannah Duderstadt to announce the winners. There you go, Hannah, they can throw darts at you this time. Alright, so first off, we have our Health Department, looks like they played Operation on Brian Douglas, did a pretty good job, I didn't know you had a heart, Brian, so that's good to see. Just kidding, Brian's got, he's a good guy. I was surprised to see, out of the thousands and thousands of board games, so that was the topic this year, right? Board games? The thousands and thousands of board games, how many duplicates we had amongst our departments, so. I don't know if there is a lot of talking or what, but anyway, there's, or a lack of, there's Operation, Health Department. We'll come back to the county attorneys, because they did a video. We have our Assessor's Office here, playing Clue with a lot of pieces missing, it says, but two great pieces right there. Played Scrabble in the Board Office, and I'll just note this Scrabble board, it's hard to see from there, but this is all the first and last names of everyone in the Board Office, good job, Julie. It was a fun weekend, just note, she didn't do it on county time. Wouldn't have time for that. This is our nurses over at the jail, doing Operation on, not Commander Perez, I don't think. So, another Operations one, this one says, Go Fish, so our Recorder's Office, there's Paula and Rebecca. This is IT Department, anyone from the IT Department in here? No, okay, so this is Pac-Man, and it says at the top that it is a board game, so. So, we got Pac-Man there, and I think a bunch of ghosts, not sure what the skeleton is, it looks good. Quirk of the Court, they also played Scrabble, so, good job, Quirk of the Court. Okay, so that's it for the pictures, great job, everyone dressing up. Of course, you do a video, and it steps it up a notch here, so let me see if I can get this playing correctly. County Attorney's Office. Alright, well done, County Attorney's Office. Alright, thank you, everyone, for participating in that, it's fun, it's a great annual event, and tradition that we've created, so thank you. Alright Hannah, do we need a drum roll?
And this was a office decision, so I'm going to throw in all my coworkers in on this, but we decided that the County Attorney's Office get the grand prize, good job. But we also wanted to throw in a second category for those who don't have as many coworkers in their office, and so we thought that for the two members of their office, they did a great job, so we said the Recorder's Office should get one as well, so, they get a prize as well. That's it.
Alright, thank you.
Great, thank you to everybody who participated. We'll now have our call to the public. First up will be County Attorney Scott Bennett. Thank you for being here today, Mr. Bennett.
Good morning, thank you for having me, and thank you for allowing me to take my three minutes. Sorry, I'm just teasing Hannah a little bit. So, this is atypical business, but I just wanted to take a moment and thank everyone in the county who helped us with our Halloween crawl. I'm not sure a lot of people realize, but when kids come to the courthouse, it's never for a good thing. It's because they're victims, they're dealing with custody issues pertaining to their parents, or some sort of dependency matter. It's always very traumatic and difficult, and a couple of years ago, we decided we need to find a way to take the sting, at least to a degree, away from the kids who come into the courthouse, so we decided to do our trick-or-treat event. We did our second one this year, and it was just a tremendous success. And the reason I wanted to take a moment to thank everyone that was involved is because it was all done through volunteer hours. We didn't spend any county money, and we didn't spend any county time doing this event. It went from six to eight, and people were here much, much later, cleaning up after the event, but that was all donated time, and it was done, I hope, to a degree, because they had fun doing it, but more importantly, it was done to benefit the kids. I hope that not a single one of those kids that came through the courthouse will one day be sitting on a witness stand with someone like me asking him questions, but statistically speaking, that probably won't be the case, and there probably will be a kid there, and I hope that they can connect the clowns and the costumes and the candy more than the trauma of what they're going through at the time. So, I just wanted to give my heartfelt thanks and gratitude to everyone who not only donated candy, but more specifically, their time, the decorations, the takedown, the cleanup. Again, this was done at the expense of the individuals, we also had tremendous sponsors. I actually did a candy run and spent $700 in candy, buying candy, with money that was donated from our area merchants, and I wish I would have brought a list, but they need to be thanked, and they need to be recognized. This was a very good thing that was done for the benefit of perhaps our most vulnerable population, and it was only done because of the kindness, the dedication, and again, the sacrifice of the people, the employees of the county, so I just wanted to thank everyone for that.
And thank you, Scott, for your love and dedication for our youth and our community. You're an amazing person, we're grateful to have you. Do we have anybody else for call to the public? Okay, then we'll go ahead and adjourn our meeting, and once again, thank you all for being here.
Thank you Supervisor Howard.
See you guys soon.